I'd like to call to order the Smyrna Planning Commission for February 2018. And at this time, we'd ask everyone to stand for prayer and pledge, please.
Trey.
Let us pray. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that we receive here in this country. We ask that you watch over those that serve our country, both abroad and at home, that keep us safe. We ask that you watch over them and their families as they provide services to us. We ask that you watch over us tonight as we do the business of the town of Smyrna. Guide us, give us knowledge, and help us to do the best we can in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
No citizens' comments at this time?
That's correct.
Moving on to item number four, approval or corrections of the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were handed out? And if not, we'll have a motion.
A move we approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, new business, annexation and plan of service. Item number one, J.M. Burns, LLC, staff comments.
This is an annexation request with a zoning attachment to that of R3. It's approximately, I think the original request was eighteen, I think it's gonna be a little bit less than that. The surrounding zoning is RM in the county and R3 and the Woodmont PRD in town. Land use plan would support a low-density, single-family residential development in this area. The original request did go all the way to the western border of the property. In doing so, it does completely surround the remaining property that Mr. Burns owns all the way to Rock Springs Road into Montgomery Way on the east side. They do not wish to have that property annexed at this time. And of course, we can't annex it unless they request it. And so, what they have, since your packets were delivered, they have requested, or changed the request slightly, to not annex all the way to that western property line and leave a strip of land between what they're requesting annexation for and the property to the west, which would therefore not completely surround the remaining property. You know, we would not be, we can't create an island or a donut hole, so to speak, of counties surrounded by the city. So, that kind of creates, we rectify that problem. And so, that's what they have requested the annexation for, is basically what's shown on the map, minus about a ten-foot strip along that western boundary.
So, basically, there's a ten-foot strip that's gonna be left in the county?
Correct.
Adjacent to the property that says R3?
Correct. Long-term, they do want the rest of this property to be annexed, but they are not requesting that at this time. And so, that's why we had to, this is a way to get around the issue. Like I said, we can't surround property. A couple of state Supreme Court cases have basically said we can't do that, so.
Okay. I'm not voting or taking part on this item, but I do have a question. A while back, you said that something had changed where you can have an annexation of a tract that is surrounded by the county, but you can't have the county surrounded by the city. Is that what you're telling us now?
The state law has changed to allow for noncontiguous annexation, yes. We could annex a piece of property that's completely surrounded by the county. When we do that, we would have to work out, there had to be an interlocal agreement between us and the county.
How you get there on?
How you get there, maintenance, and how, you know, how you're gonna do repurchase your response, all those kind of things. So, we can't do that now. That's very specific in the state law, yes, you can't do that now.
But that doesn't apply to this?
That has not changed with regards to counties surrounded by the municipality. And so, going back to case law, of course, this was all before the annexation laws changed, but there was two separate state Supreme Court cases in the early eighties that very specifically said municipalities cannot do that. So, barring anything else, that's kind of what I fall back on, so.
So, they addressed part of the issue, but didn't address this part of the issue?
Correct.
Okay.
It would make sense to me, I mean, I even talked about it a little bit with some other folks that I know around the state, if we can do noncontiguous annexation of cities surrounded by county, can you now do this? The answer was, it's not in state law. If you wanna try it again and see what happens, I'm not a big fan of doing that, so.
What does happen?
Well, we would be in violation of at least court precedent. So, we could, the issue is, I guess.
invalidate.
You might invalidate the annexation, they could. We do have an interesting issue here, the only property owner that would be involved is the person who's requesting the annexation, at least currently. I'm sure the property could change hands, but, so, I would recommend annexing what they've requested, with the amended requests, just to be safe, that would be my recommendation.
All right.
What's the area, see where it says R1? And there's an area just to the left of that surrounded in white lines?
Yes.
What is that?
That's just a couple of separate tracts of land that are, again, have the same ownership. They were separate, and at one time, there were, or I think there is at least a house still on one of those that were separated from this ownership, but now it's all under one ownership. So, that's why it's still, it's highlighted, the white highlight is a partial boundary.
So, my assumption is that the owner of the eighteen acres is probably the same owner that this house is right in the middle of that property?
Yes.
So, therefore, if the rest of it was annexed, he'd be paying increased taxes?
Certainly, yeah, if he were annexed, obviously, he'd be paying town taxes in addition to county taxes. I think long-term, it's to develop that property as well. Right now, all they've requested is this area that's highlighted in blue on your map there.
So, in doing this, we're not going to impede any ingress or egress to this property, and we're not going to impede upon any county services that are currently supplied?
No. I mean, they would still be able to be accessed from Rock Springs Road, that's where the access to those houses are now. You have, the property is gonna be developed, there's gonna be access through, from the south and through that development. That's where they're gonna begin development and gradually move north. And so, they will be, that's how the city would access it from a service standpoint once it's developed.
And at the time the property, if anyone at that time, the property was further developed out where the home is and the rest of the property, at that point, the annexation, if there came an annexation, would include that additional ten feet, correct?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if the development's going from south to north, you're increasing, all of those cars have got to go out through Montgomery Way?
Yes.
So, we're increasing the load, we're basically backloading the subdivision?
Yeah, they'll have to go back to Montgomery Way and either back to Rock Springs or south to Lee Road. Or, and there's also some connections to Lee Road.
To Lee Road, but you're, we're going from the middle, working back, we're going from the middle, working out.
Right.
Which is adding a bunch of cars. I count at least fifty lots in there.
How many lots are in, planned to be in there?
I don't, we haven't, I mean, we've kind of received a concept plan, I can't recall exactly, fifty maybe, or I don't know exactly.
If I could talk, Matt Taylor from SCC, it's around fifty is what we anticipate in that area. And the reason we've requested that area versus the entire is sewer capacity going the other direction, and that's what we're trying to work out. So, I think the concept plan that's in your packet actually shows a large portion of the property, the way we'd like to develop it, it's we just don't have access to sewer. And the fifty lots that we have are all that we could take back to Montgomery Way Pump Station that's down at Montgomery Way and Lee Road right now.
What we have in our packet is that?
Is that?
Yeah.
I've got some limbo seventeens I could.
In theory, it's gonna be a long time before you get to Rock Springs Road.
I think the concept actually, I don't know, it hasn't access directly to Rock Springs, even as you get back to the, to the north.
Right now, this particular concept doesn't go all the way to Rock Springs, but we have
looked at the remainder of the property. It does have some slope challenges, there's some very steep portions as you get closer to Rock Springs, but we have looked even further there. But the area that you see in red is what we've requested to be annexed. We show a green line on the upper left-hand corner, and that's where the ten-foot strip would be. And we've got about fifty lots in that little concept there. And as soon as we get access to sewer, then we would like to request the rest of that development that you see.
Basically, in times past, where they changed the annexation law, we would be probably talking with someone about going ahead and just annexing the whole thing and being done with it. But we're, our hands are somewhat tied now as far as what we can.
We can only act on what they request.
Y'all have other questions?
A wish is of the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second.
A second, get it on the floor.
We have a motion and a second to recommend the annexation and zoning to R3. Discussion.
The, the advanced plan, which includes the other property, was mentioned that it's a ways off, but even at that, when it's implemented, you still have another ways off before you connect with Rock Springs.
Yes, I believe so.
So, you could end up with about a hundred and thirty homes coming through Montgomery Way at some point in time until such time as you get to Rock Springs.
We possibly could, but we've also, I mean, like I said, we've looked at the connection to Rock Springs as well, and just some of the great difficulties over there. We've got to find the right product to go over there.
Is there a chance that it will not connect to Rock Springs?
Um, I don't, that I don't know. I mean, until we really get the whole, you know, the sewer's the key. If we can get sewer, then we really start to study that site a lot harder. And so, we felt like the sewer was more realistic, and we know we can get it in the area in red, so we've got to work on the rest of the property, honestly, Ms. Atkins.
The next section, would it be all of this that you're talking about? Of course, it'll be a while before that comes in. And the reason I'm asking, I assume that that road right there next to lot number one would be the entrance off of Montgomery Way, is that correct? At the next section?
That's where it would, that's where the next section, whenever we would get sewer access, that's likely where it would start because that's the most downstream side. I'd have to bring the sewer up from there.
Kevin, what's staff's thought about traffic capacity, adding this to the subdivision?
I mean, Montgomery Way is a collector on our thoroughfare plan, so I mean, it was built to carry more traffic. You know, the whole idea, I mean, it's why it connects Rock Springs to Lee Road. I always, you know, would promote more connections to two neighborhoods, to one another, as well as to the main artery, were feasible, just because that does disperse the traffic, so it's not all concentrated on one street. I think if this whole property develops, you're gonna need another access to Rock Springs Road, I think, because this is a large tract. You would, you are gonna, would be talking about a bridge, you know, to do that, really. But I think.
Kind of like Hunter's Point.
Yeah, something like that. Because you do have the creek at the bottom there, the hill, so. I think this, the concept doesn't show another access to Rock Springs, I think you're gonna, to develop this fully, you will need that, I think, because you do have so much development in that area that's all connected. Right now, the only connection is to Montgomery, other than one or two connections that go, you can't get to Lee Road. If you're going to Rock Springs, you have to go to Montgomery Way.
So, what, for lack of better, for what I would, I guess, say, phase two, do you think that would be required before?
I think we need, definitely would need to look at that hard when phase two comes out, yeah.
Well, that may be some good information to give to these folks tonight, too, if we decide to move forward, because next time they bring that back, there should, probably should need to be an idea or a plan of action for that, I would think. You know, we've got a lot of growth going out there on Rock Springs as it is, and there's more farms for sale out there, this is only gonna continue.
This is the first time we've seen a concept like this, as far as the, on this particular property?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. I did not remember seeing this before.
No. There's, the only thing we've had is new other property on the south end, it was all a part of this property, where Woodcrest is being developed. So, but from this point north, this is the first time we've seen anything.
Does Abbott Woods Drive, does it go straight to Montgomery, or is there some other roads that we'll have to go through to get into?
I think it does, it does go, it doesn't go all the way to Montgomery, it goes.
To, is that Free Mark?
Yeah, Free Mark, and then Free Mark, then you have to drive south to, I think it's Stonefield, which takes you over to Montgomery. I believe that's the name of that street.
We have a motion and a second to recommend the annexation and rezoning. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Under annexation, plan of service, item number two, Patel Property on Florence Road, staff comments?
This is an annexation request with a C2 zoning attached request as well. It's for about 1.75 acres, the eighty-two sixteen Florence Road. Currently has a CS, which is a commercial services zoning in the county. Surrounding zoning is RM in the county and R3 in town. Land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. This is a developed piece of property. The park that has been requested to be annexed is a bait shop there that's been there for many years. There is some residential development on the northern part of this parcel that has not been requested to be annexed at this time. The desire, basically, they want it to be annexed, tie on to town sewer, and redevelop the site. So, they have requested C2 zoning, redevelop the site with the same, basically the same use, except adding more uses as far as gasoline sales and whatnot, but. And so, that is the request. We did confirm the commercial zoning, they have received commercial zoning last summer through the county's planning commission, but then now they have requested annexation, commercial zoning with the town. I guess that's all that I have.
So, the access to the rest of that parcel would be through the commercial?
Yes, as it is today, yeah.
This would be our new C2 zoning?
Yes.
Is that the appropriate, or is it more of a neighborhood area? Which one would the staff?
Well, C2, we did talk about that with the applicant, C4 would be, might be a little bit better zoning, only problem is, C4 would not allow the desired use, which is the gasoline sales and.
Which it already has.
Right. Well, I don't know if they still.
It used to, I don't know if they still pump gas there?
I don't know if they still do or not, yeah.
I don't think so. They did it one time, but I don't think.
But they, I think they're, they're gonna basically redevelop it, kind of re, you know, do complete redevelopment of the site, really, with a convenience store, gas sales type use, which needs a C2 zoning to be able to do that.
Yeah, okay with that.
Yeah, at this location.
It's been there for years.
It's been there for years, you know, I'm okay with it.
That's fine. Do I have a motion?
So, move to approve, the staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under new business B, rezoning request for Rocky Top Properties Mill Lane, staff comments?
This is a piece of property, two fifteen Mill Lane, currently zoned R3, three point three five acres. Surrounding zoning is I3 and R3 in town, and RM in Rutherford County on the east side of Mill Lane. Land use plan would support heavy industrial development in this area. Sewer is not here yet, it would have to extend south from Wade-Hare, and so they would have to work through that with either the county road department on the road, or containment easements across private property. This is the property that was, we all looked at a couple of months ago, that did request rezoning to R6, and that was recommended against that, and applicant subsequently did withdraw that request, and has come back, and now wants to go back to the I3 zoning, which is what it had before it was zoned R3 several years ago by different owner. So, I don't know if they have a specific development plan or anything like that, but they did want to go back to the I3 zoning, so. I guess that's all that I've got.
Does staff feel this is more consistent with the area?
It's more consistent with our land use plan for that area. Certainly more consistent than multifamily would be. You do have, of course, the property to the west is the CSX spur line, so it's kind of as what it is, but then you have the other I3 lots that are either undeveloped or have houses on them currently. So, it would certainly be more consistent with the land use plan.
Is there anything on R3 now?
I think there is a house on the parcel to the south, I don't think there is on this, I don't believe. Or if it's, if it is, it's not being used, I don't think.
I'm sorry.
And it's kind of what we asked.
Yeah, it is.
Anything else? Y'all have other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under new business C, preliminary plats, Portico Place, Portico Place and Blair Road, staff comments?
This is a preliminary plat for a, section one of Portico Place, it was called Blair Place when it came through for rezoning purposes, but they have changed the name, still the same development plan and everything, nothing changed with that, but has fronted on Blair Road and the existing city street of Portico Place, it's west-east of Blair Road, will be extended into the development. Zone PRD, five point seven seven acres, sixteen lots proposed. We had four standard comments that would need to remain. We had, under staff comments, comment number one was really for their information, we have, the town council has approved an interlocal agreement with Laverne that we would serve sewer into Laverne here. That has not come back from Laverne yet, so we're still waiting on that from them. So, it was really for their information, just to let them know that we can only provide actual sewer to the lots that are in Smyrna at this time. Number two and number four are really kind of grading permit comments that do need to be, still need to be addressed. Comment number three was regarding showing the road improvements as recommended in the PRD approval. We did receive those today, so they have amended that. Basically, what that was primarily was at the curve, where Blair Road curves, curved to the west, there was a kind of softening of that curve, and I think maybe a little bit wider shoulders and stuff in that area, so they have shown that now, we do have that now.
So, we scratched.
Switched crash, number three, yeah.
All right.
I believe that's all we got.
All right. Y'all have questions? Have a motion?
Move to approve, the staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under preliminary plats, number two, Sundale Section One, Old Rocky Fork Road and Big Sun Lane, staff comments?
This is a plat that y'all have seen before, but the approval has expired, and so they have resubmitted it. Zoned R3, twenty point one nine acres, forty-seven lots. We had three comments. First two are kind of standard comments, the first one is, the road approvals and all that have been obtained by the school board, to provide access to the new middle school, that plat has not been recorded yet, and because of that, this property actually doesn't have legal access to that stuff, so I think they're gonna take care of that, but that's really just for their information, more than anything, so they can get that, work with the school board to get that taken care of.
But that's really just for their information, more than anything, so they can get that, work with the school board to get that taken care of. But it's, it's consistent with the plat that y'all had approved before, nothing has changed. It's all part of the, the sketch plat that we have looked at for the entire development, nothing has changed, so, so just ask for reapproval.
It's hard to believe, it's been a year.
It's been, it's been about a year and a half.
Questions? Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried. Moving on to, under new business, items D, final plats, number one, Sundale Section One. I think it's the same one we just looked at.
It's the same plat you just looked at, this is the final plat that they're, they're ready to get to work now, so they're asking for their final plat approval. We had four, uh, standard comments that would need to remain, but other than that, everything's going to work.
Any other questions?
Moved to approve, and Steph comments?
Have a second?
Second.
Carried.
Uh, motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried. Under item D, final plats, Bankside Section Five.
So, this is a final plat for a parcel, a plat, a preliminary plat you looked at, uh, last month. Fifty-two lots, sixteen point one one acres, R, R3 zoning. Uh, we, uh, we had a couple of comments, we still need comment one, we can't take off, comment number two, that's been addressed. Uh, they have development agreement, all that already, and they have started grading out there, so, they have the approval to do so, everything, so. But anyway, so that's, it's just, uh, the one comment that's all that's left on this one for Bankside Five. Again, consistent with the preliminary plat that you, uh, looked at last month.
Any other questions? Have a motion?
I'll move to approve, and Steph comments?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried. Okay. It is my understanding that, uh, the next item, uh, under site plans has been withdrawn.
That's correct, it'll be coming back next month.
So, we'll move on to number six, February bond review.
Yeah, we have, uh, five, four, five, nine, uh, Woodcrest Three. This is, do have permits on a hundred percent of these, there's twenty-six lots here. Did talk with the developer, they do plan to pave, uh, early summer. And they did request it be extended, so we would recommend extension of this bond at the same amount for six months. Uh, Woodmont Four, uh, well, for clarification on that, there are actually forty-six of the fifty are built in that one, so about ninety-two percent built out. Did talk with the developers representative on that. Uh, they were trying to get done, uh, but the wet weather kind of caught them, and they weren't, weren't able to get done. So, they did request to be extended six months, uh, for that, and so we were, we're okay recommending extension there. Uh, Lennox, Phase One, Section Two C, uh, that one has been, uh, is now, is now basically a hundred percent either built or under construction. They do plan to pave it this year, they, they did request a six-month for extension of the bond, so we did recommend that one, an extension of six months. Uh, Parkside, Phase Two, have talked with them, they are, uh, we have, since that time, we have received Asbels. So, one of the things, we can't take off number six under the public works comments, we did receive those since that time. They are working through that to finish that up, and they are, uh, we recommend an extension. If they're able to finish it up, I'm, this is really the end of the maintenance period, so we're, we're finally releasing that if they can get done by March sixth. Otherwise, we would need to, might need to extend it six months, but we're okay release if they get everything done. We would amend our recommendation there. And then, Village is a Green Tree, uh, this is two phases that got combined under one. They are basically, need to amend the numbers there, too, it's actually forty-four out of forty-eight are built. Uh, there are a few areas kind of where they're connecting into a future phase that they haven't finalized the paving or anything yet. They are, have tried to work on that phase, and so that may be done soon, but as of right now, at least, there, there is some paving that's not been done, and some other things to clean up, too, so, uh, they did, uh, say that they would be, everything would be completed when they do extend into Section Two, Phase Two, and they're about sixty days away on that. So, uh, we would recommend extension of this one for six more months till they can kind of finish that up. So, give them some time to do that. So, that is what I have.
Please show me not voting or taking part in discussion on this item also.
Okay.
And.
Moved to approve the bond.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried. Steph comments, other business?
I don't have anything else.
Do they have anything? Don't have anything? We stand deterred, thank you.